Thank you, Dale. At this time I'd like to plan meeting order. I'd like to welcome everybody and hope you have a happy Thanksgiving and I'll turn it over to Mr. Schuler. Call the road.
Jerry Fairman here. Ralph Watson here. Ken Arne here. Ray Lyman not here. Ms. Coe?
Yes.
Jerry Smith?
Not here.
Randall Jenkins?
Not here.
Dr. Ake?
Rest.
Steve Pierce? Steve's not here. He just left the nursing home rehab. He's moving into his mom's house up here on Lynn Valley.
You're going to pick for Jenkins?
Mr. Jenkins, no, Mr. Jenkins. So he's real big and hopefully next month he'll be here. If you could, Ms. Watson, if you'll hand that down. Ms. Meads?
Present.
Ms. Tolls?
Present.
Good. Fairman, we have four. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of agenda.
Adoption of the doc.
Sent by Dr. Ake. Any discussion? None noted at all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous.
You vote.
Next is a resigning request on Highway 19E. It's at the very back of your minutes.
Minutes.
So I apologize, how did I miss that?
I'm sorry, that was my fault, ladies and gentlemen. Next is approval of September 2019 meeting minutes.
There's no meeting on code.
Much to thank Ralph Watson.
Good.
Seconded by Mr. Arne. Once again, I apologize, they are verbatim from the point that Mr. Lyman's requested. On the board, any discussions? None noted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous. Now, I apologize. Now we're back on track with the resigning request, 1766 Highway 19E. And it's from A-1 to M-2. If you go past your minutes, about six pages back, you'll see the public notice. It was written Elizabeth Star on November 8. And then you have your actual next page is Mr. Men's application for resigning. Reasoning to request a resigning into a M-2 is that Mr. Men has started a new company. This is the company that he'll be doing. It is concrete siding. Really exciting for our county and there's some other things. He also has a sawmill located there near the property and he has some other business opportunities that he's looking for. But this right here is the main reason we're calling for our resigning request.
Not to go with 1766?
Do you remember, do you ever notice that?
No.
You know where the Alphawer Venture?
Off the grid.
The Alphawer Venture?
Off the grid.
Off the grid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Directly across, off the grid, that area there.
Okay.
Almost as though it came like something. Staff record meeting's approved.
What'd you say he was going to be doing? Concrete.
There is a sawmill there now.
Yeah, there's already a sawmill, but this is actually concrete.
I have some other things that he'll be doing.
That will be weird.
You got a motion by Mr. Arne?
I'll agree.
Seconded by Mr. Watson. Any other discussions? No discussion noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous. Number five, RB, RB Mark, is still postponed. I'd like to request a, we think the vote is taken off the agenda until they have the engineering, things of that nature, bring it together if they have.
So.
Second.
Cane to Ms. Coe? Seconded by Dr. Ake. Any discussion? None noted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dale? All opposed, lock sign. I'm sorry, my brain went out three times. None noted. Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous. Okay, Mr. Men, the next county commission meeting is December the 16th at 6:00. And that'll be here in this courtroom and that'll be the finalization of the resigning. All right. Thanks, sir. If you want to drop a couple more pieces off over there at the office, I think people would be interested in seeing them.
Put one in the mayor's office.
Yeah, put one, we'll put one over in the mayor's office too. So you're right. Thank you, sir. Next up, subdivision of Wilson Cerberus property, six lots, total of 7.037, surveyed by Appalachian Land Survey.
Where's it located?
That is located off of Winters Hollow and Rum Mountain. Somebody wrote me something that came back to me. Start. First you have Ken on the third.
Thank you, sir.
Here's me and Ralph Watson, I was just standing out, I was out there. Take your coffee. Yeah.
Or this is.
All process drugs, all available.
What about second?
All right.
Do you need a?
Not one of the addresses has already been established. All parcels, two bedrooms or above.
What about water?
Water is by well. It's, there's no public water in that area.
What about there? Is it single, or is it double rule going to be in there?
Well, you've got a access, private access off the bottom floor there that goes behind it. And we were required to give an additional 20 foot to that in case everyone would expand. And then you have the Winters Hollow Road, which is a service road to this whole property and the extension of that. Staff record meeting?
They're going off of Winter Hollow or they're going off of Rockford Hill?
They'll be coming off of Winter Hollow.
I'll make a vote for you. Does it have a right-of-way on both sides? On the front end?
No, but he granted the 20-foot additional, what he wrote into his deeds, as additional right-of-way to the rear, to the northeast. Everything else is to the southwest.
Is that the indication of the driveway? Is that what that is?
Pardon me, ma'am.
Is that 20-foot indication by the driveway or at the top?
Uh, there is a driveway.
I mean, that goes?
Yeah, that's the driveway that accesses, that's part of the old Coon property.
Okay.
There's Preacher Coon that did all the subvisions up there.
Shouldn't leave that, huh? Don't you?
No, uh, it's Coon, it's his last name, not mine.
I couldn't.
Then you can.
I'll say the motion.
Ralph Watson made the motion, seconded by Sonia Coe. And any further discussion? None noted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous.
When are they going to do anything about that?
Mark, here.
On this?
It'll be, it'll go on itself here as soon as we get done with it. Ralph, you want to lay down form, sir?
This is a good one, I gotta keep.
Next item on the agenda, number seven, subdivision of Gerald Carroll property, four lots, surveyed by Dennis Pierce, represented by.
Was that on the lower road?
No, this is off the lower road exactly. I guess this is about the last of Gerald's property up there.
It is.
This is the last, this is right up, close to where Liam's driveway was on the lower side.
How many of your jabbering there?
Total of 4.746. You can handle that place, sir.
Very good. That is a weak student. Very good.
Make sure I mean if y'all are rocking out there. I've got a bank server up here, you know anything about that?
John.
Oscar Beverly Bank. Where in your, in your pot? I'm not going to give that back to Dennis, he might think that's some shit. That was in your pot, too.
I didn't mind, I'll take it back.
Which way is it facing here?
That's the back of the property, there's law.
For a road?
That's in three levels, that's a level apart and that's on that bank.
All lots except number four is considered three bedrooms, number four is considered two bedrooms. I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm looking in, I apologize. Nelson. All, all, all three bedrooms. All four lots are three bedrooms.
I seen it somewhere.
Staff record meeting's approved. All right. Much to thank Ralph Watson's path.
Did you say this was near where Leaning Ticks' driveway was?
Yeah, it's just up. Yes, ma'am. Got a motion by Ralph Watson?
I'll second.
Randall, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Randall Jenkins. Any further discussion? None noted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Fairman, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Do you want that? Oh, yeah. Did you? You're gonna take one out of the room? Five, two, that's all you're shooting.
Hey, Dale.
I've seen you two. Yeah, it's a little something for Russia. Mail.
Mail. Who's your copy of your authority?
Yeah, I got her a tissue.
Jay, do you?
Land. That's all.
Did you make a copy?
You were a copy guy. No, that's not a copy. You're Christian. You went to land, land, you were flatlining on the lower road. And where, I don't know, you were skillful, kind of got us tied in.
Let's get this one.
I'll get, I'll make that one.
Okay.
Mail? Hand that down, the ratio is about worth our shit.
I didn't break $17 when I went out.
You mean he didn't? Going to get group appointed, coach.
I didn't break $17 when I went out.
Same side of the river.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, sir. Y'all, y'all had a pleasant holiday. All right.
I'm happy you're ready here.
All right, good, I'm happy. Next is Jack Hattman, report.
Well, we did meet in September, but our monthly total for that was $14,496.
Give me.
That was our September. And then in October, we had rode three residential new permits, which totaled $4,063. We did one addition, which was 530. We had seven detached accessories, which came at the $355. We had no pools. We had one modular that was 532. We had three manufacturers, which came at $250. Three commercials, which were $479. One ag, those are no charge, so that was zero. Two storm waters, which were $150. No temporaries. One CO, which was 50. We had one cell phone tower upgrade, which is 500. No floodplain development. We had the one resigning request, which was $150. No flat reviews, no bozos. We had 10 business license issues, which was 50. 21 archive fees, which was 105. We rode 34 county permits and 72 electric permits. All the electric permits, 360 stayed in the county, $5,945 went to the state. And so our total for October is $7,574. And for the fiscal year, which is July through October, that's going to put us at $60,113.
All right, uh, few super questions that we show what we've done since we began general fund, since we began writing around the building permits. If you will, Ralph, hand it down that way, Jerry. Total of $259,415 as of end of October is what we put into the county coffers through our building permit program and other permits that enter our office. That's just a little FYI, so if anyone asks.
Thank you for playing, Mark.
Yes, thank you. So you can imagine what we have been losing over construction periods.
Did you ever figure out why we've been losing?
Yeah, and it's kind of hard because you have to go back in and pull tax records and they're having a hard time getting that information for us because they're getting ready to do their reappraisal here and they're trying to get all their paperwork together, so it's a.
But you're going to put one in the commissioners package?
Yes, sir, I'll put that with the minutes and go in there.
Every minute. $100,000 a year is a, is a very low estimate. Yeah, for the broad year, with right state permits, just $100,000 a year.
Yep. That's, like you said, that's very low, but it probably averaged out. We had about three bad years there throughout. Next is a piece of paper on administrative directives for permitting extensions and rentals. I'm sorry, I skipped toes and force of the law. I apologize again, I had it myself. Next, toes and force of the law.
I'm okay.
Sorry, Joe, that's not being.
I'm fine with that. So a lot of, some of this stuff was on for October until we didn't meet an update on. Never mind on that one. So stormwater, actually, let me go back to that. The hair salon that was up on Bridge Street, the update on it is the building has been moved and we're working with them to move it to an area that they can actually put the, the building to have the hair salon. And to meet all the codes and requirements in a floodplain, or flood zone. Stormwater issues, Kristen will tell you those.
The 175 Sereni Drive, that one has been fixed, it looks great.
Skip the map.
The 193 Bulldog Hollow, he is working on it. The driveway going up, the picture on the left, the bank is falling off, so he is trying his best to get that remedied. It's going to take quite a bit of time to fix it. It's not an easy fix, so he's working on it. He stays in contact with me via email, so he's working on it and it looks a lot better. And the Five Sisters Lane, Mail and I were up there one day and noticed there was a lot of excavating going on, so I mailed a letter out to the lady who owns the property and she had her builder come in. They were, they were clearing land for her to a modular home up there. So they came in, got the permit, fixed it. It was, it was almost in the stream to the, to the left side, you really can't see it in this picture. It was almost in the stream, but they got steel fencing put up the same day, it's fixed, it looks good, it's good to go. They came and pulled every permit they needed while they were in the office.
October's a pretty slow month for actual litter complaints, so I wanted to go over what's happened in court. Especially this last go-around. This is Buck Creek Road, two Buck Creek Road, Rum Mountain. These were the pictures that I took to actually take this property to court. This is, these are pictures after the 30 days the judge gave me to clean it up. And I'll talk a little more about it here in a second. That trash coming out of this, the little hut. So here's, here's my contempt pictures. This is what I saw inside that building. So if you need a mattress, just go up there and ask.
Are they living in it?
Uh, they live, they live in that, where that mattress and that garbage is. In this next picture, you can see, that's a basement type thing where they just stacked a lot of mess. So to kind of give you an idea, property owner's Lani Ward, her niece, her most, Romesa Ward is the one who lives in it. She was served to, to come to court on August 21st. Court order was made to clean up all the outside stuff and to clean up what's in the hut. When I went out there to re-inspector, Kristen and I went, none of the aforementioned orders were carried out, so we filed a motion for contempt. Mrs. Ward appeared before Chancellor Rambo and said that they were worried about cleaning out the outbuilding or the hut due to fear of snakes and rats, which is the exact purpose of the litter code, as I read. So Chancellor Rambo told them to go ahead and clean up what's on the road, secure the building, and then work on the hut as they can and to keep, you know, for me to keep, like, just continue a eye on it. After I went back out, they had met those orders, so we, we, uh, we did not carry out any further motion for contempt. All judgments and orders made by the Chancellor Rambo are in a state of continuing, so motion for contempt can be filed at any time that they go back to the non-compliance. That's, these are fixed, though. I have no idea how this happened. So here's Bridge Street, we had it up there. Overgrowth and a lot of rubbish outside of a camper up there. So it took him to court. Owners of the parcel are Mike and Perry Gray and their, their respective spouses. Evidence was presented to Chancellor Rambo regarding overgrowth, litter refuse. Mr. Gray was representative, he was kind of combative and dismissive of the orders laid out by Chancellor Rambo. At one point, he told the chancellor that him needing to remove his grass was the chancellor's opinion. Court order was made to actually remove the litter and the rubbish outside and maintain the foliage. Upon re-inspection, they had not done that, so we filed a motion for contempt. And then when I went back up there, Chancellor Rambo said he had done enough to dismiss the case. He got two in there now. The address in there is wrong. He does have two in there now, so what we're going to try to do with that, I think, is send him a letter about an illegal campground. Okay, so the picture on the right, if you disregard this one over here, because that was Bridge Street, I'm not sure how these have all gotten messed up. This was Mountain View Circle, had him in court. After 30 days, he still looked like this. Took him back, filed a motion for contempt. Property owner's Carl Calhoun, after he got his motion for contempt, he cleaned up all the property, so we dismissed the motion for contempt. This says Brimber Road, but these are just more pictures of the mess. I have no idea how my PowerPoint got so messed up. So here's Brimber Road. This was another one that was in contempt for not completing what the judge had ordered.
Where's this located at?
This is in, this is off of Long Hollow in Valley Forge area. Owner is deceased. Myra Podge, after her passing, there were 15 heirs left on the property, no probate, so there were 15 people that are responsible for it. Individual living there is Tyler Whitson, who we actually had service on for him to come before the chancellor. Because the case was complicated due to the number of heirs and the rights of those heirs, Chancellor Rambo encouraged the ones that were concerned to put a detainer warrant out to get Tyler off the premises. Tyler had a lawyer, so through mediation, the family agreed, had it proceed, whatnot. Went back out there a couple times and in our contempt case, Chancellor Rambo ruled that he had done what was required to dismiss the contempt case. Siam Road, this picture over here is part of it, and this is it. So there's a lot of overgrowth of building that needed to be torn down. Hey, Jake, did you, what did you say, um, Brown, we wait on? Brimber Road, for all intents and purposes, is, that is fixed. Okay. It may not be exactly what, and like I said, all these, there's a continuance on these, we can always file a motion for. On this one, it was filed for a contempt motion. The respective party, which was Mrs. Haney, she did not appear before the judge on that day. He put out an attachment warrant for her arrest. I called her, and I don't know why I called her. I had a question for it, I told her what the ruling was, and she was sloppily hysterical, so I felt it upon myself to do whatever I could to get that attachment warrant removed until I could fix the property. And I did, I got, I got Chancellor Rambo to be okay with just meeting two weeks later. And after the two weeks, it was, it was fixed. This says Storyland Properties, but it's not. That was some of the issues with Siam Road. These are Storyland properties.
It's on Gap Creek, right?
Gap Creek and water plant. Overgrowth, trash. Anyways, so Steve Story came in, he is, I guess, the only surviving member of the Storyland partnership. Chancellor Ram, he wasn't at the contempt case or the hearing, so he had an attachment warrant for his arrest. He actually was arrested, posted bail, returned to court claiming that he had never received any letters. Josh and I sat down with him, talked about what needed to be done, and we're giving him some time to get it done, and he claims he'll fix the problem.
But he was served.
He was served, he just wasn't, uh, so he changed to the, no, he didn't come to the first hearing. And then when we mailed out a letter with the court order and the contempt notice, he said he never received those because his PO box has been, he doesn't have it anymore. Josh got his new address, so now we'll know where to send stuff.
When did you take him to court?
He was in court on August 21st and it was.
That's not even so good, I tell you that.
No, he has not, but then it would have been October 30th was the last time. No, it was November 13th. Yeah. November 13th was whenever me and Josh sat down with him right here and told him what needed to be done, and he says he'll do it. I had one in court on 1412 Broad Street. It was fixed in the 20 days that Chancellor Rambo gave him. These are pictures. I don't know how this messed up so bad. On the right there is pictures of his cleanup. Old Lacy Hollow, this looks like this is pretty much it. Stacy Perry was the person that I talked to. She came to court. She had cleaned it up before it actually got to that point, and so we dismissed the case. 2051 Siam Road is this White House on the right that is vacant. Owner is deceased. Because we could not serve anybody on that one, as far as I know, and Josh correct me if I'm wrong, Chancellor Rambo really couldn't do anything but dismiss the case and said the county has permission to remedy the issues. So we could go in there and clean it up as we see fit and then a tax lien be placed on the property. And then the last one, this is a continuation of a, a contempt case where 2235 Elizabeth Highway, Billy Joe Miller, we had a contempt case with him. He had actually gone to jail for him not to clean up. And I had some more complaints, so I went back out there and we still had a lot of the issues we had before, junk vehicles and junk-in vehicles. On the left here is, is the back end of a truck with tires and whatnot in it. And then the last one, this is a continuation of a contempt case where 2235 Elizabeth Highway, Billy Joe Miller. We had had a contempt case with him. He had actually gone to jail for him not to clean up. And I had some more complaints, so I went back out there, and we still had a lot of the issues we had before. Junk vehicles and junk-in vehicles. On the left here is the back end of a truck with tires and whatnot in it. He did clean up some, and we were going to work with him. Chancellor Rambo did not see fit to put him back in jail. But I want to work with Mr. Miller on what needs to be done and what stays. And that's it.
Let me ask you a question. Mr. Josh said we got it here. Well, we're blanking. We're dragging our feet. We ain't getting too many in front of the judges. You know what I'm saying? We got a lot of outstanding violations in the county that we're trying to get there, as you know. But anyway, are they anywhere? We sit down with somebody, I don't know if the mayor could, but then when we sit down with them, and they said that we could hire our lawyer to be in judgment, if we can get one, pay him, it's your case, and you try and run him.
Well, that never did get anywhere, frankly. That was going to be an additional judge or a magistrate, fireman or court. And none of that was ever approved.
Well, can you look into that and see what we can get done?
Well, I think we've looked into it all we do. We know what can be done. It's just the county commission has to approve funding to hire additional person, have additional courtroom staff. They've just not done it. So it's never been approved to add an additional.
Have you got it figured out or anything? Or do we need a couple of, make sure we need to send, mail send down with you and the mayor to see if we can come up with something and see if we can get the ball rolling?
I'm happy to talk to them. I didn't touch one of, touch one to talk with, and we explored it to its end, and Brad Johnson was involved in that. And we hit it dead end with funding.
I understand. But if we can get enough in there, pay for, pay for that judge and get this county cleaned up, would you?
Well, it certainly helped, but that just never.
Set it back and up until fall.
Yeah, well, we definitely know what the process is and can be. It just never has been approved.
We're lucky the chancellor's working with us right now to assist us in this. But yeah, we worked on that until the county court comes up with some money to do something with and some additional funds. I don't foresee that ever, ever going forward, Jerry, to be honest with you.
It was a big experience, a very big experience.
A couple hundred thousand dollars a year come off the state.
Yeah, but we can bring the fines in and then pay for, pay that bill.
I doubt we can bring $200,000 worth of fines.
Collection of court fines is its own problem, I guess, I'd say. We can get as many fines as you want to get, but collecting is a hard part.
Jake, can you pull 2051 Siam Road back up, please, sir?
And most everything that he had on there, if you think back years in the past, I think everything there I had written up and had on code enforcement reports and, you know, our records we had in the office, multiple people before when I was doing code enforcement reports, the same stuff. You know, so all of these are big cases that we've beat our head to death for years on trying to get something done on. You know, the one on Buck Creek Road, all that trash underneath it is the very reason we do this because of the health and safety concerns to it. And their excuse was, well, we don't want to clean it up.
We've had more in court this year than ever, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
There's been triple in court this year than there has been since I've been. And we're taking everyone that comes, and we've got, I don't know, 20-some or more, I think, through at this point. And all we can do is get in front of the court, and inevitably, they're going to get time. I mean, you can't just, you know, lock people up and throw them away the key because they want to clean their property. You just put them in jail, they get out. We can find them, you may not collect them. The whole point is compliance, and in my opinion, it's working very well.
Well, it is, but that's what I was, shit, we can get more in there.
Yeah, well, as quick as, as they come to me, we get them in.
I understand it, anyway.
There's been several court days where we've had 15 cases on the office. We can't overload the court because basically, he's doing us a courtesy by here.
He's heavy, yes.
Yes.
Moving forward with that, 2051, it's a house and garbage on the right-hand side of the photo there. Basically, we're spending eyesore, thorn, sides of the people out in the east side community heading out to Siam. And I don't know why that says 22. Elizabeth Highway, somebody's been down there. Powerpoint. But anyways, long story short, short on that.
It's 2051.
I'd like to have a motion, or I'd like to request one to you, that if you want that cleaned up, if you want the county to go in and do it, we have to have a motion, send court, allow the cost of new court with that. And we should have a fund of about $13,000 from collective. I think that's what it should be, brand new, cut and filed formula, that's the originals that we tore out and tax sale. So we have the money. Let me refresh that. We should have the money in the coffers to take care of this.
And once it's sold with the money, will you put that?
Yes, ma'am. Motion made by Ms. Colder, second by Ken Arnie. And the question here is, you know, we haven't made, or shouldn't have the money in the general fund or in the funds over there. They seem to be having a problem finding that. But anyways, long story short, we cleaned up, we bid the bullet several years back. We did a lot of cleanups and did the minimum in our budget and paid out for those cleanups out of our budget, in the understanding that that money would stay there for the next cleanups. So I have a motion of Ms. Colder, second by Ken Arnie. Any further discussion?
So the process would be, we put a lien on it?
Put a tax lien on it. Once we clean it up, then Josh will actually put a tax lien on. If it goes to a tax seller by paperhead plus a tax sale to the individual, somebody has to pay for that upfront to close the problems. Is that?
It's worked, yeah, totally.
And I don't know the tax status of it. It's current on taxes. It'll be on this year's, it'll be on next year's tax appeal, and it'll pay it and it reimburs. If they don't, it has to get delinquent and be sold to tax sale. So it can take a year or two, depends on the status.
It can take anywhere from a year or less to 20 years.
They are not, they are not, they have taxes.
I know, but they're up to the next tax sale.
If I were talking, I think the actual owners have been dead for 15 years or more, and nobody even knows who's there.
And then somebody worked on the house.
A little bit. Somebody came into the office and told me they were going to work on the house, and they never did. But I don't know who it was.
We have a motion to second. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the court cleanup? Say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Chairman, have you now? I'll have you be a holding, you will go from there. Thank you, sir. Any further questions, code enforcement officer? None noted. Next item is director's comments and the discussions. First, I'd like to go over the permit extensions. As the paper was behind the packet, the last three pages. And basically, this is a standard operational procedure. We're just going to clarify the patient, just allowing you all to know that it's happening and how will we do in that with extensions on building permits that go above 180 days or beyond a two-year process. I would like to have, make a motion to adopt. And this also carries on, we go to the corresponding, we send permits to the state, and we'll let them come to the state office and also the water company. Have a motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Colder. Anybody need a few more moments? Any discussion? No discussion, no, in all the papers, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Chairman, have you now? Pull you there. We have administrative cleanup. If you remember back in our June timeframe and everything, it was a little crazy. So I noticed we never approved the minutes in May, so that's not good. So I'd like for y'all to take a moment, go over the main minutes. Mr. Lyte wasn't here, Mr. Pierce wasn't here, Mr. Arnie wasn't here, Mr. Smith wasn't here. I think Ken had his hip fixed, Jerry had his, Smith had his shoulder fixed, Steve was in cancer surgery, and I think Gray had his, was recovering from his spinal operation Motion made by Ms. Bates to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, it's second. Second by Dr. Rick. Any discussion? Any questions, sir? None noted, all in the papers, say aye. All opposed, lock sign. Mr. Chairman, that was approved. You now, sir. Next item on the agenda will be Cove Bridge Road, Cove Bridge Circle, and Cove Bridge Lane located in Butler. This is some of the properties that were subdivided by Perry Streets and Holtz back in the 60s. And naturally, it doesn't look too good up there, but I'll show you where we're at. If you'll see the little red dot, that is Cove Bridge Road. It comes around, goes up to our new resorts over here, and comes back down and back around. That was a one-way road at one time. This area here of the Cove Bridge Road is a 20-foot rideaway. Cove Bridge Circle comes here, climbs the hill, goes across here, and comes on down and around, and comes back out to the same intersection. That is only a 15-foot rideaway. This was all done in the 60s, early 70s. This map, this aerial photo you see here is 1997, 98 flower, the winner of 97, 98. You notice there's not that many houses located along here. This road here, which is cut off because my power looks a little bit screwed up, is located here as Cove Bridge Lane. It was divided off in late 70s, early 80s, and it has a 40-foot rideaway. So basically, what you have is coming by the Miller Farm here, up here, coming off Red Hill Road. If you come off Red Hill Road down in this area, that is Pearstown Road, Butler sits right here. Our farm will be right in this area. Carter View, graveyard sits right here, cemetery sits right there. We're all people from Butler, the majority of them. So the Cove Bridge Road, you have a 20-foot rideaway. All right, and it's barely passable to farms, especially up through here, but right through this area here. And then Cove Bridge Circle, which comes around, and that's a 15-foot rideaway. The 40-foot rideaway is mock sticks, makes no difference because it's done directly. Now, there is some individual properties as they've been divided, there's some areas that may be a little wider, 20-foot on one side or so, but for the majority and what is needed out to the county, that's that rideaway with Mr. Lloyd, with, I guess he was clerk and master back in that day, and Holtz was something to do in courts back in the day, and the other individual, Mr. Street, Tyler Apartments and such. And Mr. Mooney was county commissioner. When all that was done, it was prior to ever adoption of subdivision regulations. Now, what I know dear and dear to my heart is, one day when I was a young man driving when I wasn't supposed to, I drove a 1973 Mercury Marquis to right here, and I came in this area down along the lake, and I went fishing right off this bank. Well, Mr. Perry lived right here, that's where his brick house was, which was one of the belters. He taught me there. He explained to me that this is a one-way road, and we walked right back out here at that point there, and he showed me the sign, and it said "one-way." And that's been considered one-way for years and years and years. So to get to the point of the one-way roads, I'd like to show you a video. It'll go on, just take a few minutes. I'd like for y'all to listen to it. And did we get, did we get the volume up on that?
Yes.
And let's see what we can do here. If there's any curse in its mouth, I'm about too close to the side of the road. You're not like. We apologize for technology. Sometimes it gets crazy. Turn that down just a little bit on the computer. Drive right there. Turn it down a few more. Turn it down to about 10. I apologize. Every day we just start with all your mouth, I apologize. This is going down Cove Bridge Road. This is, we just come off of Red Hill Road, off of Pearstown Road in Butler. And yes, it says in Carter County. For those people, you can realize that. And you'd be surprised how many people don't realize it is. Now, this property goes on along here. This is an old road bed, just died, will happen. This, we just went around a big curve. I don't know why it shut down, keep an eye on it. We just passed, this is the Miller property we're getting ready to pass here on the left. We go about 250 feet past that, and we get to where the Cove Bridge Estates is at the beginning, and also where the 20-foot dedicated rideaway is. This is only a 16-foot rideaway according to the road, secret tenants list. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, to your left is how this road comes counterclockwise and comes out, and that should be no entry, one-way traffic. This is two-way traffic here. If the leaves were scraped off, you'd have about, I think we measured 15 foot nine inches.
Two-way could take out all those decks.
Yeah, well, I agree with you, ma'am. And there's no garb rels or anything of that nature. We're coming up on the intersection of Cove Bridge Road and Cove Bridge Circle, which will go to your property. And we're about to take the right onto Cove Bridge Circle. This is the intersection, and I think right there is where mail cuts. But anyways, this is going clockwise. As you notice, there's about eight to nine foot of asphalt here. This was the one way that Mr. Perry explained to me in no uncertain terms that it was. This was the one way that Mr. Perry explained to me in no uncertain terms that it was. And the next time I went to get a haircut at Mr. Moody's, I got explained to again as a young man. As you notice, this road takes off to the right, driveway. Mel's trying to pull the seatbelt, that's why he's not keeping on the road.
No, I heard that.
This one takes to the left. Also, all the property on the left, and this right from here on out is good on property, but you did notice that entrance was there. Maybe it was right here at Melk, somewhere when I get too close to the edge of the road, it might be. But anyways, this is county maintained roads. It's on the first road list that we have under RH Taylor. Now, the original road turned left here, that Holtz did not sell, and that went back out to Highway 67. You notice the old driveway to the left? Driveway to the left? This is all still one-way. This is all still one, supposed to be one-way, yes, sir. Driveway to the right, which is left from this one-way street. Do you see this one's to the left also, or to the right? This is the only driveway that doesn't meet the criteria of turning there as it's supposed to, and it's a newer construct at home. Now, the road right here on your left is Cove Bridge Lane. That is actually a 40-foot rideaway. There's Mr. Perry or Mr. Holtz Moore's house from back in the early 70s. Come on around the one-way, we're still going one-way clockwise. Pull off to the left of the house under the bank. Additional pull off to the left of this house. You can see the direction that the person that's living in that house, which way they come. This is a turnaround that Mr. Atkins put in, and now Mr. Perry to pit all homes all the way down to the lake. This pull off of this house is right there on the right. They're tempted to do something on the left. Driveway to the left. This is better to get y'all out there and drive, taking up the time. This driveway here, it's to the left, they did a pull-off, and they cut a new driveway in. The pull-off was originally on the right. The original pull-off of this house was on the right where the silk fence is, and we just died and Jay fixed it. See this one to the left, just keep on trucking some. Driveway pull off to the left, going clockwise. Mel's on the steady hand. This is a new driveway that was cut in this past year. It'd be tough to take it to the left, but it goes down to where their boat dock is. Now, we're getting ready to come back into the intersection of Cove Bridge Circle and Cove Bridge Road. Should be a stop sign right here instead of there, and a one-way, no entry. We're gonna turn right back on Cove Bridge Road, which is a one-way from here, going counterclockwise.
It wasn't one-way in that before they ran it.
No, not before they, it was not, no, sir. It was two-way traffic. But as you notice this, it's still 20-foot rideaway by deeds. There is some additional rideaways that's been granted through subdivision property since the original concept of this road and dedication. Do you notice this one turns off to the right? I don't know if you noticed that or not. This driveway turns off to the hard right. This is where William Montoya, right here, is where the office still will be going. This is the gates going in, that was originally set there for the Atkins. The bent barn's up here. It's a hard left turn on Cove Bridge Road. You notice we get down to about an eight-foot wide road, we're going counterclockwise, it's one-way. There is some additional rightway on this side of the property that's not on this side. If you notice going counterclockwise, you have to turn into that driveway, which is in the correct direction. Turn into this lot, corrects direction, sir.
You said county maintained?
Yes, sir. Being county maintained under RH Taylor. Correct rightway going into this house here, which is a beautiful place. Correct orientation to go down into this house, it goes down and comes in behind this house right here. This house is the only one that doesn't have, it's a short driveway, and cars we've seen there is backed into it before. We're coming into where Cove Bridge Road intersects each other, where we began. Then we took a photo of the width of the road. Can you get the photos now, please, Jay? The other photos. Okay, this is the photo where we're just coming down the hill, where, what's that say now?
It's about 12 foot, five feet.
Yeah, so we're right there. And then the next photo is on the other area, what's it sitting at?
About 15 feet.
About 15 feet, which you theoretically can get two cars past there. The other one up here, it's 12 foot, is not possible, it's not a good idea. That's the reason this was developed, and that's the reason the highway department ticket caused it was one-way. There used to be a one-way on right in this area here, in front of my truck box, was a one-way. Those were old signs, not selected, the old black and white, kind of rusty looking.
And if you look at the Cove Bridge sign, it's just, it's a weird place.
Yeah.
Makes no sense that that sign had been there.
Now, come to this point, I was able to acquire the one-way sign because we had a county highway department, county highway department put one-way signs in last Thursday afternoon. After they were put in, there was calls made, Mr. Cobal said he just had his eyes, his cat, I expect care of it. Chairman of the highway committee called down there, told me one of the signs removed, so they went back out and removed it. Mr. Cobal is, under the understanding it was a one-way, frozen that area, that's why he ordered those put up, and they were taken care of. Now, this individual that called, county commissioner, has kind of put Mr. Cobal in a situation, the calls. He put him up and took him down. Now, if y'all realize, Joshua, if something happened, somebody wrecks, somebody gets killed, it comes up to county responsibility, correct, sir?
Possible.
Possible.
Possible. So, Mr. Cobal, I'd like for us to go ahead and send him a letter from the chairman of the county planning commission and myself, that the option to those roads are correctly put in, and as one-way, that's noted. And what we need to do is have a vote. The planning commission has the right to do the development of the properties in Carter County, and we sit down on the board, Mr. Cobal, to take it to the highway committee, explain to them the corrections on that, and we will vote for the sign being requested.
He's gonna take, he's up.
They're there now.
Okay.
They're in Mr. Cobal's office at this time.
We do have, we do have documentation, and that's a one-way. What addition? I mean, it's a message, black and white.
It's about as black and white as you can get, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, cool. I wore my phone now, and then I...
Welcome to politics.
Are, are we ready, Joshua? Some says yes, some says no, so I just want to...
I think, I think the evidence is overwhelming, that it's always been a one-way, just by the driveways that were put in there years ago.
I think when I first ran for commissioner, and I went up through there, driving around it, I treated it as a one-way street all the way around through there, so...
And you went the exact way over.
Yeah. Hit those houses along.
Do we know whatever happened to the original signs?
You know, signs are kind of funny. Dr. Aikah, signs are kind of funny, they like to disappear. You have hoodlums and heathens and just kids out having fun, they'll take them down. You'll have utility departments that come in and maybe take the sign down, not replace it. It sits there, and the next thing you know, it's at earth metal. Back in the day, I guess it's on the source now, things of that nature. So, they disappear.
I may ask the mayor, can you give us a description of who's calling and why? I mean, do they live there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who's calling you? People that live there, or somebody?
Yeah, I had four or five from up there, and the chairman of the highway committee called me. Mr. Cobal called me too, so I, I had five or six from up there. I think they're all, they're all same way, they didn't want it to be, they didn't want it to be one-way. And I, so I said, I don't know, I need to find out for sure, and I asked if we had the, in black and white, where I could say that's the width going to be, and what we gotta do.
Well, unfortunately, as you know...
I'm on the highway committee, and we have not had a meeting, so I, we're directed, our chairman, we were given directed to take them down.
I don't understand why you did that either, that type of, Mr. Cobal...
I'm sure he did. I didn't know, we had authority anyway, I remember some of the, I thought we were just an advisory committee.
Me either. That's what I thought.
Well, calls I got said the mayor, I thought the mayor don't have that authority. I thought it was, I thought it was bad. Said the mayor told him to put the signs up, and I said, well, tell him, but I don't have that authority. That's, you know, that's highway committee, you're planning, be the highway, yes, but...
How many residents?
Sir?
How many residents? How many properties is that up to there?
There are several properties, most of them are vacationer properties. There's a few people that live there, a few for the horizon. And you have some that comes in and spends the fall months here, and they move on down to Florida. And then in the spring, they head back way up north, and then they come back down again.
Couple of them called me, said it's like six, stay there year-round or something.
Probably, I'd say five or six.
I was gonna say it's under 10.
Yeah, five or six that stay year-round.
I think when we did the research for the Butler Fire Department, Randall, Detective Michigan, did we not, we bed that in there, and I think there was like four at that time. No, 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 there was, there was five, county Atkins, which I'm not making wrong.
It's not, I knew it was under 10, I just couldn't remember. I'd have looked at my notes, but it wasn't that many full-time residents up there.
Staff recommended sending them there to highway superintendent to give him the option to move ahead with that, take the committee if he likes, or if he decides he wants to go ahead and just operate under that later.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this the only road into the new resort?
At this time, yes, ma'am. There will be 167 later on.
I was gonna say that was, when we discussed phase one with them, we discussed that phase one was probably gonna be the hardest because of the road.
Yes.
And that after phase one, entrance from 67, or access from 67 was gonna be close to that, to phase one or phase two, which would fix all our problems right now that we're having.
Not every problem.
Not all of them. I hit it, the phone calls, basically, that's what we cover, so...
Well, the, it's, I think everybody knows, the circuit's been publicity about it. They're, the Goodalls are planning an event that begins December the 6th. So, there's gonna be, over time, December the 6th to the 22nd or 3rd, I think it is, there're gonna be a lot of people that are gonna be using that road. So, we're gonna have increased traffic, even though I understand in conversation with Mr. Goodall that they have asked the realty company and the store down there if they can borrow some, borrow some parking for them, from them to park off-site. I think that has been granted. I do know that they'll have a 15-patenger van that they'll transport folks up and down there, so that will be a good sum. My biggest concern is emergency vehicles. I don't see how in the world, either whether it's Johnson County, Avance, or Carter County domestic that answers a call up there, and God forbid that it happened during this event, but I don't see how leaving the car up ahead on, maybe what happens, for a DMS vehicle, that that is in the best interest of our citizens.
Yeah, I think the help was there, in harmony with the community, not only there, but also the citizens of Carter County per se, they were making best to leave it as one-way and go ahead with the signs back up as proper.
Sounds like the minutes have been one-way. I don't know if we can prove that by some minutes or some road list or something.
Highway approved.
It's been a one-way all the time, somebody just...
And there's none of the listings in the highway, the road, the old road list or anything. And there's asphalt, edge of asphalt, edge of asphalt. You know, we've worked on that myself, Mr. Pierce, for several years, and that, I can correct it, and it's went back to asphalt to asphalt, there's no corrections. Asphalt's the only place, there's a couple little smaller places here, Carter County, it's probably one of the places.
And I didn't see any guardrails, as you pointed out.
No, sir.
Essentially, no strobe on any of the roads.
No, sir.
I would think it would come down to safety.
Yeah, it's definitely a safety concern. I make a vote from Ralph Litt. To have a motion by Mr. Ralph Watson, Ralph Litt, the highway superintendent, requesting the signs be put in place back up as noted.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ken Arnie. Any further discussion?
Can we have the attorney go in on this? I know you said, Josh, if something were to happen up there, that county might be liable.
Well, the concern I have is the uncertainty of putting up signs, taking down signs, and that, obviously, there's nothing in black and white anywhere that ever said it was a one-way. It might have been understood, but you've operated under as it is for, I don't know, like you said, 40 or 50 years, and now we're going out putting up signs. My concern is maybe the general concern of whether or not we have the infrastructure to permit this development or not. That's my concern. But certainly from the video there, there's spots that two cars can pass on a two-way street going through there, and if the traffic is increasing, that's my general concern to the whole thing. But, I'm not calling it.
You have a sign on the other end that says "do not enter." Yes, there'll be one that says "do not enter one-way traffic," and the other one says "one-way traffic."
You've got five to 10 people that lives there all year-round. You know, we're probably managing to ignore each other, and they probably know each other, so... But now we're talking about more houses, more people, more, more traffic. I think we need to do something, so I think it's a good call.
And there's other counties being built, I'm below it right now too. When's your committee meet again?
Next Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday weekend.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
You don't produce that Thursday about it, which is...
Yes.
About what we know.
I'm glad you haven't called me that later, ma'am, before you did that. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, last time. Mr. Chairman, as unanimous vote.
You can give her a positive take with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, something came up into our litter code that we could have administered here. All right, something came up into our litter code, the county administrator here. Ma'am?
Can you also give me a copy?
Yes, ma'am, and it'll be, uh, it'll actually run. And the picture. Uh, something will begin in, uh, January 1st, uh, on the court, kinda highlighting what's occurring there, is that we're gonna attempt to start having these individuals prior to building the court, come here for administrative hearings. Uh, we haven't got to talk to Joshua about that yet, we're gonna get down with him, uh, to do that, and we'll start after our January meeting of the planning commission. So, I'm just giving you guys a heads up, and, uh, we may wanna go to subcommittee of the planning commission to do it on a different day, or something to that nature, so be thinking about that, if you got any questions, Joshua and myself, uh, we'll reach some information out there in the near future. Uh, I see we won't have a planning commission meeting in December, correct? You know, I have that, play the motion.
I'll make that motion.
You can, you chairman.
Make it for a minute.
I'll make that motion. Dr. Aiken made that motion?
Second.
Second by... Okay. All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
As you announced. All right. We'll have some training starting in January, also, we may have a joint meeting closing on that evening, so we can get some training down, uh, and we'll go from there. And next, we have some other courts, Mr. Ken. Next, I don't know, Jim, it's the chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
That's one quick question about, uh, somebody asking, or actually, we can talk about the full commission or, uh, tell them the comment about, at least these campgrounds, it's supposed to be campgrounds, it's turned into permanent residence. Is there anything, would we start here with a taxation, or a fee, or something added on?
Well, one actually tried to come in and not pay their hotel motel tax.
Boy, is that added on?
Yes, all those, pretty, and we wouldn't deal with these, uh, campgrounds permanent lived in areas after, after a couple of years.
Dangs put on, I think it's my state's gonna, pretty good.
Well, they get taxed for that, they're wrong, they fix all that stuff, and this is a reappraisal year, too, so they're really gonna get real, real, real excited.
But it's still gonna tax as heavy as what it would be if it was like permanent residence.
Well, the, our regulations don't allow for permanent residence in campground. Once, once we have the administrative hearing board set up, and, and we have it functioning properly, we can stop those people in those campgrounds from court.
They can do whatever they want, cause it pays for it. That's all I care about. So, with it, with it involved, whatever.
They're set up as a campground, you gotta remember, and we had some not long ago was living in, a couple of them.
There's, there's some serious safety concerns involving, uh, floodways.
Floodways, or...
You know, that's, that's one of the, the, the biggest one is, is campgrounds are not legal to be lived in full-time, that's, that's in state code in multiple places. The other big one is they're putting these campground, they're, they've got these campers stored in campgrounds in floodways, and you know, so if it floods in January, there's nobody there to, that can hook to that camper when it starts raining and get it out of the way.
Just like what happened last, this, this, uh, Mr. Montan was speaking about, so, yeah,
I mean, it's all part of our, it's like...
Part of our, we're working on that, so, we might as well get to asking.
Mail, you wanna give us a definition from the code about permanent resident? What does that, what does that entail? Like, can they have sewer hookups, can they run water to it?
The, uh... If I can, if I can back my truck up and hook to it with a minimal effort, and move that camper.
So, underpinning?
Can't have underpinning, cannot have, cannot have permanent hookups.
You just gotta ask.
You know, those hookups have to be quick connect, you know, you see, you see so many of them, that they've got a sewer line, that they've got a, a pipe run out into the ground, that makes it permanent. They're not permitted, you know, every, every structure in Carter County has to be permitted in order to live in. Manufactured homes are inspected with a state inspector in the factory when they're built. Modular homes fall into a little bit different category. They're partially inspected in factory, they're brought off to the side, and then, then I go inspect those structures as building inspector. They have to be permanently fastened to the ground. Any building you bring in, per the building code, has to be permanently fastened to the ground. We don't require that on a lot of accessory structures. If that accessory structure is in a floodway, any manufactured home, anything that is placed into a flood zone must be permanently fastened to ground. And so, there's, there's not a very simple explanation of this, it gets, it gets really complicated. The, uh, you know, T-deck issues septic permits, not knowing that someone's gonna take in and hook a camper up to it, so then they come in and say, well, I have my septic permit. Well, no, you can't get a septic permit for a camper unless it's approved through the planning office first.
Who signed it? I mean, like the camper or the landowner?
As far as, on the tax?
We, we signed, we signed properly on it.
Is it big enough, whether you wanna make some changes, or is it just a slap on the wrist and...
Basically, if, if it's, if it's in violation of the code, it's wrong, it must be corrected. You know, if, new construction is, is very simple, it's a stop work. We have the authority to put on a structure that it cannot be lived in. The building codes, the international property maintenance codes, all kinds of different, different things give us that authority. A whole lot of it is case-by-case basis. If someone comes in and they want a permit to live in a camper because they have nowhere else to live, what do we do? You know, we have issued some temporary permits for that.
Temporary use permit?
By issuing a temporary, by issuing a temporary permit for it.
That's...
Number one, we're not making that person homeless. Number two, 911 knows that they have that camper on that property.
That's another thing, too, for the emergency services, a camper catches on fire, you don't want firefighters or rescue squad people in that camper if they notice somebody's off there, you know what I'm saying? No sense in me putting our...
Temporary permits, I understand.
Temporary use, there's no such thing as a temporary permit, it's a temporary use permit.
Somebody that are down there with a $50,000 duly and a $70,000 camper, I don't think it's gonna be, they're having a hardship to find another place to live, which is my opinion.
No, and, and, and it's not that, you know, it's, it's, on the cases that we have issued that temporary use permit, the, the other option for these people would be homeless. If somebody comes in with a 70, wait, wait, a $70,000 camper, chief. Somebody comes in with a $150,000 camper and they wanna put it on these property to live in, our answer to that is no. If they, you know, intent is important, we have a number of people come in and say that they wanna get a permit to live in their camper until they get their house built. And they either, and they may already have the building permit, or they say, or they're in the process of getting building permit. We're perfectly fine with that. You know, that's their goal, is to get their house built and move out of that camper. And it's just, the, the simple answer is, it's complicated.
And then again, you have transient workers that's, say like TBA right now, they've been up there for about, going on two years right now, working on new turbines and things of that nature. And they're constantly rotating in and out, and they may have a camper or a campground. All those guys said heck with the campers, they started renting cabins there up here, but anyways, there, 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 you still have those things to do, and you might accommodate that because, you know, that's just, you know, when, when Snap-on starts with their new construction up here, you're gonna have some transient workers coming in for that.
And, and when, you know, when I get it over and over, people, just like this directive on the, on the permanent extensions or renewals, everything will be floated, you know, right out of what the codes are. So that, you know, it's right there in black and white, that, that's exactly what the code book says.
If they break this, side it and, or put on there, no living, or whatever, and they continue to do that, what happens? You all can't go up there packing and say, get out.
Well, the, the, the first step is side it to the administrative hearing board. Then, then if they continue to do it, you know, then their appeals prob, their appeals process starts. You know, if we appeal it, you know, then, then, then we will file it and take it to court, as far as I know. You know, then, then they have to come before the judge, and the judge would make a decision on it.
There's a long draw algorithm.
Is that after the question, Dr. Atkins? Next is, uh, the chairman.
I'll make a motion.
I'm second. Motion, Mr. Reynolds, second by Ralph Watson, all in favor to say aye? All opposed, lots aye? Chairman, as you announced. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, everybody have a super, super Thanksgiving, a super Christmas.